This conference will now be recorded.
Concise meeting as there's only two items on the agenda.
Yeah, Mary.
Oh. Can you hear me better? I'll just speak louder. So I was gonna say there's only two items on the agenda this evening. First, we're gonna start with requests or comments from the public. If anyone's gonna share with us this evening, you'll start by stating your name and your address. You'll have three minutes. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a signal so that you know to kind of wrap it up and then go on to the next if there's more. If anyone has public comments, we'll hear those now.
And they should, those comments should be directed towards the revenue neutral topic.
Right. Sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Do you have this on Zoom or anything like that?
Are we recording this?
Is this on Zoom?
It is, yes.
Okay. My name's Scott Harding. I live in 13786 Valley View Way, Bonner Springs, Kansas. I'm here to try to help some of these poor people and some of these middle-class people that are having problems paying their house payments and taxes. That's the big deal. I've seen a lot of people lose their houses. A lot of people evicted out of their apartments because they can't pay the rent because they had to raise their taxes. And I know in other parts of Kansas City, Kansas, they're throwing people out that are actually paying the rent and bringing in lower income so they can get grant money. And I think that's totally unfair to the poor and the middle class because a lot of middle class are falling into the poor class now because of all the taxes that we're paying. You know, we're not just paying one tax, we're paying tons of taxes. And that seems to be a problem. And I think that what I would like to see is you guys cut the mill levy down. You know, if we can, 10 mills or something like that. You know, I don't have all the figures, but I do know you have an excess of money. I think it's 8 million or something right now, is that correct?
I can't respond, but I will.
Okay. Okay. But a lot of times when I come to these meetings, they don't respond. You can talk all night and ask questions and at the end of it, they don't say a damn thing. Every meeting in this whole city is the same way. You can't get answers. They say, oh, we're transparent. Hell, no, you guys ain't transparent. None of them are. And I feel bad for everybody because you never get a true answer. And I think nobody wants you to know because from what I've seen, there's a lot of money that's moved around and nobody can account for it. That's what I'm running into now. I'm just getting in, I don't do this all the time, but I've just sort of got into it accidentally. And then I run into some of these papers and stuff and then you ask about it and then the answer you get, well, we don't know. And that's the people that should know. Even you guys, I know you should be, when you're doing a budget and stuff. I go to these meetings and they come up with a 22, 2022 spreadsheet. Well, that's telling me, I said, where's 23 and 24? Well, we don't have it done. So how are you guys coming up with these budgets? But I would like to see you stay revenue neutral. And if you can, just lower the mill rate and, you know, 10, that would be great, you know, or at least kick it around. I would appreciate it. And so would the older people and the middle class and the poor, you know? So thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else have a comment?
Hi, my name is Craig Estes. I live at 13520 Pioneer in Bonner Springs. And I'm here to get you guys to vote neutral on this tax increase. I've only been here a couple of years, but my house payment has gone up almost $300. $300. It's a lot of money. Okay? I've been coming to some of these meetings and these people that are retired, and I should be retired, but I'm not, but I can't. And but these people that are, I'm 67, I'll be 68 this year. And I'm watching some of these people come up here that are 70 and 75 years old and they can't, they can't stay in their house. And it's because of taxes. We're all taxpayers. You all are taxpayers. There's a lot of waste and we know it. Everybody knows. And I grew up in the military. My dad was in the military all of his life. And as a little boy, we lived on the post. And I would look around and I'd say, look at this waste. We know it's waste, okay? Let's tighten this thing up. Let's tighten up the budget. Let's, I was talking to my brother earlier today. And if we had one person, I'm a businessman and have been for over 30 years. I guarantee you, I could walk into any city in the United States and in one day, I could cut budgets by hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's all I'm asking you guys to do is just, let's just keep this thing neutral. It's getting, it's getting ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Move on to item number two. And I'll answer your question here in a little bit about our budget. In fact, I'll just do that now because after that, we're gonna get in the conversation. And so our, our budget, I'm trying to remember, so 8.2 million dollars is our entire budget, not our reserve fund. We're in a, quite a predicament as a city. As our previous administration, we found out over the last couple of months, did not give us as accurate numbers as we thought, as were presented to us at the time. And so we ended last year thinking our budget was, we had close to a million dollars in our reserve, in our general fund, and it's actually closer to 800,000. And so we're already in a very precarious position with our general fund based on inaccurate numbers that were given to us before as far as reserves and revenues that they thought would be coming in, expenditures and that sort of thing. And so that's kind of the, what we're trying to balance here is making sure we're being good stewards of this money and making sure it shouldn't some huge emergency come up. That is what our general funds are there to do and our reserves are there to do, that we're not depleting that so much that we're being irresponsible with our taxpayer dollars. On the other side of that, we've seen taxpayer bills go up and you guys probably see me right next to you at the county level, trying to advocate for lower taxes for the residents in White Lake County because we've seen it. We've been offset, offsetting on our shoulders the tax burden based on our community by the community college taking 16% of every dollar that's paid in, as well as the unified government taking as much as we do as a city for services that never make it to us in Edwardsville. So on every dollar, about 25% of every dollar comes to Edwardsville. Of that 25 cents of every dollar, we run our police department, we run our fire department, we run our city hall, we run our municipal courts, we pay for street repairs. Whereas that same amount of money was going to the unified government and we see very, very little for that. In fact, recently, we did get sci-fi money in from the unified government, getting a little bit of investment back to our city to help with streets. And that's one of the things on the potential chopping block for them this year is taking that right back away, hopefully not in a retaliation, but that sort. So what we're trying to do is slowly recover from a deficit that we didn't know was there. But it's not hopefully all at once. I, you've probably heard me year after year saying, just because your tax appraisal's gone up, doesn't mean the government should get more money, though those should not go hand in hand. In fact, it doesn't put more money in your bank account just because your tax appraisal goes up. And so keeping that in mind, trying to be responsible and not taking that full extent. And that's what Mr., but Mr. Harding had mentioned is what can we do? Let's, let's at least see some mill decreases. From my understanding and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, is the entire difference between revenue neutral and the full assessment is about 4.75 mills. So that's what we're working with is 4.75 mills. Each mill is approximately $113,000 in our city. So the entire swing here is about $495,000. If we do the mill, keeping the mill where it is, which I again would not, not support because again, I think we need to give some relief wherever we can, but from also going revenue neutral, again, that's, in our city, that's only about a $495,000 swing because our entire budget is between 7 and 8 million dollars for the entire year. So there's just not, not as much wiggle room as you'll see in other places. And I, not to make this a lengthy dialogue, but the, the last thing I would mention here is Edwardsville, unlike most of the other entities in this entire county, has been lowering our mill year after year after year, being as responsible as we possibly can with the tax dollars. Over the last eight years, we've had a seven-mill decrease and you won't see that at the community college and you won't see that in the unified government, but that's because we don't, we've been trying to not take more than, than we have to, to run our city because we, as a, as a governing body, have been advocating on behalf, behalf of our residents, trying to not kill them with the tax dollars because I know it is really difficult. I know people here in our community, one lady was so excited to retire and she goes, I don't know if I can because my tax bill keeps going up. And we, a lot of us run the Edwardsville Mobile Pantry every month where we're packing cars with groceries for people who can't afford their groceries. And those are the faces that I have in mind when I am up here making decisions with the finances or those people in retirement on fixed incomes in our communities that are just pushing us to make ends meet. And so that, that doesn't go wasted. I just wanted you guys to know and people online that maybe weren't able to make it today, that that is heavy on our hearts. And I take that very seriously. Sorry, that was quite the dialogue there, but please go ahead and I wanted to make sure not to ignore that question. And then we can go on to item two, consider resolution 2024-06, declaring the cities, whether we intend to exceed revenue neutral rate as mandated by the state of Kansas, we have to vote on that. But if you could just kind of explain what we're doing, that would be helpful.
Yeah, please have compassion for the older people and the poor. Please have compassion.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Towns. So what you have before is the background information on the item for resolution number 24-06. This resolution does three things. It declares our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. It proposes a tax rate at 39.940 mills, which is a one-mill decrease from the 2024 levy. And it sets the hearing dates for the budget and the revenue neutral rate hearing for September 9, 2024, 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. All of those are within statutory compliance with the law that governs this process. We have notified the county prior to July 20th of our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And the reasons are being proposed, it's proposed that there is a one-mill decrease from the 2024 levy is that from affirmation discussions that, that tax burden relief was a priority of the council, therefore staff has inserted this one-mill decrease as part of the process. However, you have, this is where you consider whether you want to change that number. With that, I would.
And just to clarify, this intent to exceed revenue neutral doesn't lock us in saying we have to exceed revenue neutral. We can always go back to revenue neutral.
That's correct.
But the, the one-mill decrease is saying we will not exceed, we will at least get a one-mill decrease and can work on tightening that budget moving forward this month.
Again, given the feedback and the discussions and affirmation about what the priorities were through discussions all the way from April to our most recent discussion, we felt that coming in upfront in this process with the mill decrease is more public facing that way. And it's something, though, it's not as healthy as maintaining it at the 2024 mill rate for our budget, as we well know. But it's something that's manageable to start. So as our maximum proposed mill rate, 39.940, is a one-mill to start.
Would say average taxpayer amount on the Edwardsville apartment mill. No, I would say on the top line, it's $25 a year.
Just a.
So a decrease in, and this resolution was increasing the mill in Edwardsville, I want it to relieve our taxpayers approximately $25,000, $25 a year.
Actually, just.
I don't remember discussing this in any of our meetings. I'm a member of the revenue neutral, I do recall discussing that, but I do not recall the one-mill reduction.
So it doesn't actually save our taxpayers $25? And I don't mean to go back and forth on this, but all it's, all that would do is if one mill is about $25, that's saying we're not taking an additional $25 on top of the 200 and, on top of the 200. So at the 4.75 mills, if one mill is about $25, I can kind of do that math and say four mills is about $200. That we, we could take an addition to what we've taken the year before. So that's saying we're gonna be taking 175 more when, instead of 200 more. So it's not saving them 25, it's just not taking as much as we otherwise could have if we kept the mill levy the same.
We don't need this. This is what makes me mad at anything is we get this stuff sprung on with just this sheet of paper, no figures to back it up. You know, I mean, I can't make an informed decision. You know, I don't do this with my budget or my business. You know, it's, it's all on the spreadsheet. And that's what I want, I want to see the numbers. I don't want to, I can't make an informed decision right now on this. I'm not opposed to lowering the mill, don't do that. I just want to see the numbers. That's what I want to see. And we don't have to do this tonight. We just have to do the revenue neutral part of this, correct? Because we can do this when the budget talks on next month.
No. What this does is tell the county that we intend to exceed, at some level, revenue neutral rate. That's what this does.
I understand.
Within that, within those provisions statutory, we propose our tax rate. That we have to propose that. And it can be the 2024 rate, which is that 40.940, right? This, this number is for, for your discussion, a one-mill decrease. We also have to declare when we're gonna have the hearings, the budget hearing and the revenue neutral rate hearing, which will be September 9. So in a sense, what we're doing is complying with the state law of telling the county that we intend to do this. And then, of course, through the several next meetings, we'll be talking about the budget itself and then certify that budget in September.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
I understand. All tonight is supposed to be that we're gonna exceed revenue neutral, not to vote on a mill decrease because we can do that in budget later, correct?
That's correct. You can, you can make, I think that to the mayor's point is that even if you set it at the same rate as 2024, as your maximum, right? At 40.94, you can work your way down all the way to revenue neutral, should you so wish.
That's not what I'm saying. It does, be it further resolved as the governing body adopts a proposed tax rate of 39.94, but a one-mill reduction from the final line. So then it would be, it would be answered right there. After you can.
Yes, you can. Like I, like I explained earlier, we, we were pretty confident that the council wanted to see a, a tax burden relief as a priority. And so we're just offering it upfront. You don't have to pass this particular mill rate. You could pass the 40.94, should you so wish, or a lower number, should you wish. You can do that. We just have proposed this as an upfront, transparent, hey, we're already committed to the priority of tax relief.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, but I don't want, I don't want to vote to exceed the revenue neutral. I just don't like the fact that I don't have the numbers to back that up. The numbers might, sorry, sir. I don't want to comment during this.
Yeah, you can't talk during the, and so.
I want, I mean, I don't, I just want the numbers so I can have it in my hand and I can tell, oh, why did you do this? And I can tell, this is why we did it. But now I think, I mean, I don't, I just need the numbers in front because we can make both mill, you know, lead me out the road, right?
Correct. We don't have the budget numbers when we do that. If you decide, you can decide that we won't have the one-mill reduction right now, you'll go to that 40.940, okay? So you do that. That's where we're gonna be, okay? And then we'll build the budget and then you'll say, well, our priority is, is we want a two-mill reduction instead. And then we'll build the budget around that. And then you will adopt that budget on September 9 to include a hearing of the revenue neutral rate. That's required statutory.
That's what we're doing.
Yes. This is required statutory. We have to do this before Saturday. Yep. So should you wish to entertain it, that, that section A, sorry, section, section A, the governing body adopted a proposed tax rate of 39.94, that it's changed not to exceed 40.940, should you so wish to use.
And I would just, and not to, to bring that up, but I think, and that's why we have some, some visitors with us this evening, is the other entities in the county have had the, the needs brought before them and that's why their vote is not even due to consider exceeding revenue neutral. And so I, I appreciate that staff's at least coming to us upfront and saying, let's start with at least, we only have 4.75 mills to work with, but let's at least start with a one-mill reduction and then see what we can do from there instead of saying, well, let's start a full increase. I think that's at least showing goodwill and the good intentions on behalf of our staff and saying, let's, let's at least make a commitment to do that tonight and see what else we can do, especially when our other entities are saying, hey, let's, you know, we're not even gonna look at exceeding revenue neutral. I know because of our current predicament, we need to dive into those numbers some more. But I do appreciate staff at least starting us on that, with a good intention of, let's start at a one-mill reduction and, and see if we can work on it further. So is that confident that if we did the one-mill, that you would be able to work with that?
Yeah, as I promised, it's not as healthy as the whole map, right? That's, you know, we can work with that for sure. We can certainly, and it's your priority, right? We're, we're here to manage within those boundaries that you set. So I think we're fairly confident that we could deliver a budget with a one-mill decrease that still does, as I said last year, accomplishes everything that we wanted, right? But we just have to be somewhat creative and we have to be, you know, we have to manage in a certain, you know, way that cut where we can and balance, and bring you a balanced budget. So the answer to the question is, we're, we're confident that we could do that with a one-mill decrease. The best scenario is to have the 40.94 mills, not to exceed that, because it just makes it more healthy. Specifically, and I think about the fund balance and I think about the consequences of an upcoming, you know, bond review and that sort of thing, right? That's, that's on my mind in regards to this, confident on the one-mill decrease that we can.
Well, then I make the motion to set the max levy at 39.940. I second.
I just don't think this is transparent. I want to see the numbers. And that's, I'm not asking for a lot, you know? I mean, I'm not opposed to looking at it, you know? I want to see all the options. Like we have in the past.
And maybe I'm a little confused on what the numbers, you want to see what the mill rate would, would, would bring in revenue wise or do you want to see the entire budget?
No, no. Like you did last year, you know, you did, you put like option A, B, and C.
Yes.
This says, option A, we're lowering the mill to 1.
Right.
Option B, lowering the mill to 3. Option C, we're lowering it to 1. And then we'll know, then we'll know, I will know, I'm sure that other people will like to know, where that fund balance is gonna be. Because like you said, where our fund balance is now, we're 8%. Should get 15. But, but I just want to see what it's figured out, what we did last year. Why can't we do that? And still vote for the revenue neutral.
I see what you're coming from, Mark. I think this is kind of a cap, for lack of better, with the intent that even if when we come to the meetings and, and they bring us all those numbers, we may just say it as cap, that we've still found some reason. That's how I understand it.
And I think with you saying that you can work with that, and we've already asked, you know, the C and the library board and everybody else to kind of, you know, just kind of figure it out, I think that if we're asking them to figure it out for, you know, their ends, for everybody, I think that he would only be right to do the same thing. And I, and I understand that we want to get the, the fund balance at a good amount, but I don't think that we're gonna be able to do that, I know, one-sill swoop without putting the burden on the taxpayers anymore. And so.
Well, the burden on the taxpayers is gonna go up even higher because, because our bond rating has been lowered so three times. Just in five minutes, separate notes we had, if we would have let them go for another 20 years, instead of 10, it's gonna cost us between $400 and $600,000 extra interest and interest payments because of the lowering of the bond or rate. So I don't know what that's gonna do. I've got a bond gal that's looking at it right now, going to see what it's gonna cost us, our bond out here rate down here compared to if our fund balance was healthy, we'll leave that out for a little bit.
I think, Mayor, I think there was a question about the, kind of, we pledged to do what we did last year was at our last meeting, we said, as a part of our process, we're giving you the options. We will give you the A, B, and C and what the impact of those are. And I think Mr. Schreiber said it specifically right, is that we will work those A, B, and C options from this maximum, whatever you set tonight. And that's where we're working from. And we'll say, is that, can we reduce it two mills from there for a total of three or should we leave it alone? That's what it is. But again, it's up to you to just insert the number. There's a motion and a second on the floor and we're in discussion. But the answer to that is we will give you those particular numbers as we proceed and work towards that budget adoption upon September 9.
So is this motion adopting the mill or is it opposed to adopting the resolution 2024-06?
Correct. Your adoption, which is, you're adopting 2024-06 resolution.
That would be.
Correct, correct. In, in the resolution, you're gonna, your proposed tax rate will be 39.940 as this, the motion is second on the table. It will notify the county that we are exceeding the revenue neutral and it'll set those dates for those events.
And so it's not setting the mill rate, it's setting the maximum?
Maximum. Again, you could say.
The maximum would still be 39.940. Which is gonna cost a property in the way, or $100,000. How much, how many percent that costs?
Every mill is $113,000. That's what we got.
And then you can bring us the presentation with the numbers that would show, if we go revenue neutral, this is what it'll be. If there's a two-mill reduction, this is what it'll be. And then the one-mill reduction if we pass the resolution.
Correct. Yeah. I'm sorry. What if it's level? You mean at the 40.94? Well, at the 40.94, right? We, we'll collect more, $113,000 more dollars just in the property taxes. And, and then we would still present you the A, B, and C because you can still set your priorities as we go. You say, ah, we decided there's a two-mill decrease of what we want, gonna be the A, B, C that. Does that make sense? So you can keep it level, right? Or as it's been motioned in second, consideration is the 39.940 as the maximum, not to exceed mill levy rate.
Okay, we have a motion from Helsmith Adcox, a second from Helsmith Schreiber for the first piece column.
Adcox?
Yes.
Bishop?
No.
Malat?
No.
Schreiber?
Yes.
I heard her vote.
Yes.
Say your name, sorry.
Yes.
Mayor, yes, the motion, okay, I'm sorry, the resolution passed.
Resolution passes. So what this has done this evening. Resolution passes. So, what this has done this evening is only set a maximum, and we're saying we are maxing, at least we are doing a full mill reduction. And we're gonna work with presentations to see if we can get that better, but making sure we do it responsibly considering the concern we're left with, with our general fund. Making sure we're being responsible and bringing tax relief however we can. Do you need us to do anything else?
Right.
Okay, we're done.
Specifically, if we, if we are exceeding the revenue neutral.
We have the option to exceed revenue.
For the grant tonight?
Yes.
Yes. And then we can work down towards that, should we so.
Okay.